I will call the meeting to order at seven P M. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance and we'll follow that with a brief moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence. Thanks, everybody. Okay. So as usual, our first order of business is public comment. Has anyone signed the registrar?
Yes, one, Chris Bushman.
Awesome.
Shocking.
Yeah, that's cool. Once a month.
You got it.
All right. Well, you know the drill, Chris. Three minutes.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Chris Bushman, five thirty-two Oklahoma Avenue, and I appreciate you indulging me in what is apparently my latest in a series of Sykesville residents appreciate the local government tour.
I love it.
Tonight, I want to talk about what I think is the the third leg of a very stable stool in this town. You guys know, I've already talked about the professionalism, the competence and dedication of the police department, also the the great work that the Public Works Department does, being the face of the town. And tonight I want to talk about that third leg, which is the administrative side of what goes on. So I want to thank Joe and Carrie, Jen, let me see if I can get all these names out. Stacy. Sarah.
Sarah, yeah.
Drew, Kevin, Barbara. I'm probably missing some. But like in any organization, that is sometimes the the less glamorous work, it kind of happens behind the scenes. I think everybody in here knows how much they depend on everything that you guys do. You know, I think the best organizational chart I've ever seen was one that wasn't a hierarchical kind, where it's somebody's in charge and everybody else works for them. It's one that looks more like spokes on a wheel. And everybody is just as important in supporting that wheel and supporting what's in the middle, which is not a person, but the mission. And so the administrative side of things supports everything that the council and the mayor does. It supports everything the police department does, supports everything the Public Works does. And I have witnessed in the time I've been coming to these meetings, it has confirmed what I believed, which is the the level of knowledge and professionalism that that you bring to this town. And you support and inform the decisions that are made, you implement those decisions, you facilitate everything that's done here. Everything that the police department accomplishes, Barbara shares in the credit. Because without her, you guys couldn't do what you do, and you know that. You're out there more doing what you do because she is supporting you behind the scenes and making sure everything happens and runs smoothly. The administrative side is is keeping the trains running on time. And maybe in a town like Sykesville, that's kind of an appropriate metaphor. So with that said, and I know we have ceremonial things happening tonight and everything, I'll wrap up hopefully on time for once.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate your comments. And 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 we echo your sentiments, so thank you for that. Yes. Okay, that brings us to our first item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. And it's inclusive of one item, the minutes from October, is this right? Fourteenth, yes, twenty twenty-five. I did find that one typo clerk, and I'm sure that's been approved or fixed. And with with that in mind, anybody have any other comments or questions? And are we ready for a motion?
I move that the minutes as amended be approved.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dyer.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schofield. All in favor of the consent agenda approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And do we have any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Thank you, sir. And why is that?
I was not present at that meeting.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So that's a unanimous, less one abstention. The minutes are approved. Okay, that brings us to our second item, which is first and only item of new business this evening. And that is to discuss, consider, act on a scope update on the Michael Baker International Work Order, number two, B F Schreiber Cannery Reuse Master Plan and Construction. And this is, I'll let Joe take it from here, just for the edification of the public. The work order itself was prepared by Michael Baker International, referred to as MBI. And it will allow the town to move forward on the public outreach and deconstruction planning for the B F Schreiber Cannery building.
Yeah, not a not a work order that we really wanted to present to council. Unfortunately, so again, this is a a scope change from a work order that we approved a year and a half ago now. And when we started that work, it it became very obvious that the building wasn't going to be able to be salvaged or be able to be reused for anything that was going to be productive in the future. So we did reach out to Michael Baker to update their scope of work to include all of the processes it's going to need to, let's say, deconstruct the building. This is a Howard County site, so it's not Carroll County. It's a little bit different than what we're kind of used to dealing with. But again, they have, you know, a planning commission that it has to go through. They have a historic commission that we have to go through. And of course, there's a permitting process that has to happen as well. Not to mention, you know, construction administration, all the things that come along with that. So the amount in the or the additional amount in the scope of work is one hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. To remind everybody that this this project is actually being funded with a one million dollar capital grant that the town received several years ago through the state. So again, all of those funds would be reimbursed through that grant.
Thank you, Joe.
Inasmuch as we don't want to, staff is supporting the the change in the scope to move forward with the planning for the deconstruction of the Carrery.
And then move on to the master plan.
That's correct.
Yes, yes. Any questions for staff?
Thank you for using the word deconstruct.
The other D word just hurts.
This is terrible. I'll take that one as well.
Take that one, too.
Can I ask, if possible, if they can save some of the bricks so we can possibly reuse them in some fashion?
That was part of the plan, is to part of the deconstruction of the building was to see what reuse options there would be for the for the bricks that are there.
Okay, with no further questions, I remind everyone of staff's recommendation to move to approve the updated Michael Baker International Work Order, number two, B dot F dot Schreiber Cannery Reuse Master Plan as presented. It's our motion.
It's approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So the motion has been made by Councilwoman Gerdoff and seconded by Councilwoman Keenan. All in favor unless there's need for debate. All in favor of the motion to approve the updated Michael Baker International Work Order, please, as presented, please say aye.
Hesitantly.
Say hesitantly, yes. So that means a unanimous, any any opposed? Okay, a unanimous approval of that motion. That brings us to, yes? Oh, I thought somebody said something. You had a hiccup. Maybe I heard you. Okay. Thought we were getting interrupted. Sorry. Announcements and reports. I'll start with that first announcement.
You want to go with chief first?
Yes. So do you want me to jump right to that and skip the announcements and council updates and all of that, right?
You don't have to. You could do those brief ones.
Yeah, that's all. That's what I meant. Yes, that's what I'm going to do. So the next meeting is Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five. And also announced that we have volunteer opportunities available as a crossing guard and on the police auxiliary. Please email town at Sykesville dot net for more info about these volunteering opportunities and any others you may find interest in with the town. And then that brings us to our staff updates, and we'll start with the Honorable Chief Spalding for the public safety report, among some other fun stuff this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sure, thank you. My pleasure.
Okay, before we get to the festivities, let's talk about the public safety report covering the period October sixth through the nineteenth. A relatively small report in terms of total numbers, as you can see, total four hundred and fifty-two events. Before I forget, I've placed on each of your, in front of each of you, a, I call it a cheat sheet that kind of spells out what each call for service is. What I would ask is that you take some time to digest them, and maybe next meeting we can talk about it some more. I'm sure you might have some further questions or want to know, not only what do they mean, but how do we implement them? And what are they, what are they for? What are they all about? So we can go into them in a little more detail at your at your leisure next time, if you if you wish. But does that kind of satisfy what you're looking for?
I believe so. And then, right, and then just these major headings here. And maybe the differentiation between a full patrol and patrol check. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. So would you like to do that next time?
Yes, that'd be awesome. Thank you. Yeah, we have too much fun stuff to do tonight.
Absolutely.
I'm too excited.
Can we make this available to the public?
We do not, generally. I mean, I guess we can. It's part of our records management system. Can you think of any reason why?
About that part, no.
No?
Yeah, there's no names or anything.
No, it's just kind of an explanation of each of our calls for service. And remember now, the calls for service are are those incidents that aren't aren't a crime, aren't reported as as a crime, because those, of course, are handled on an incident report.
Right.
And they have a whole separate classification.
And even that is information that's good for for the public to know. But yeah, yeah. So but this is, I mean, not those numbers, but the differentiation between the incident report and these calls for service. So great. Thank you.
Chief, is this exclusive just to Sykesville, or is this over most police departments?
It's standard terminology for the most part. Anyone that uses the caliber of records management system similar to what we use probably has the very same same calls for service. Now, we are able to manipulate that to our own needs so that, you know, there's there's certain things on there that may be specific to us, but it's all with, it's all contained within the system. So you kind of pick and choose. Any questions about the public safety report? You'll you'll notice there were eight incident reports. Again, relatively, I hate to use the Q word, but a low number of incident reports during this period. Again, we're only looking at thirteen days, two-week period. Any questions about any of those incident reports?
I don't have any questions, just as a result of reading the community policing efforts report. I see that there's an opportunity maybe that's being missed for a particular time of the day for instead of the community policing that's happening on Main Street to happen at Spout Hill Road when the kiddos are crossing the street from school. I would appreciate a little more presence there when it's available from from you guys. I had a couple a couple drive-bys. When I'm outside, I I yelled at Mayor, and which is great. But this time, it is twice in less than a week asking, because they're new, their children are first, are sixth graders this year and are hesitant about crossing Spout Hill Road. And so I gave them my my lecture, and the kids were in the car. But anyway, it would be, it was something I promised them I would bring to your attention. Yeah, thank you.
No other questions about the P S R before we move on to the fun stuff?
Good.
Okay. All right. Well, this is one of those times when it's probably the most rewarding experience for me to be able to sit here before you and recognize someone who has what I would describe as consistently performed at a very high level. And you've all read the reports in the past. You've seen her name come up many times, particularly with regard to community policing. But she excels not only at community policing, but traffic and criminal work. Very well-rounded person who's very deserving of this promotion to the rank of corporal. It's the first-line supervisor rank. She will have to undergo some training over across the street for this, which I know she's eager to partake in, which would be great training for her. But yeah, very rewarding experience. Let me just give you a little bit of history here. And before I go on, I wanted to recognize Parker, who's her partner here, as well as her mom and dad, John and Tanya. And so thank you all for being here.
Thank you, yeah.
So a little bit of history, because it's, it reads very well. As you may recall, Morgan started with us as an intern back in, I believe it was twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And Parker and I were trying to put the pieces together earlier here today. And then we liked her so much, she became an auxiliary officer and worked with Jeff. And Jeff was gracious enough to hand her over to us without too much of a fight. And she entered the police academy right across the street in February of twenty twenty-two and graduated in September. Since then, she has only been the officer of the quarter four times and been the runner-up for the officer of the quarter, which we call honorable mention, four times. So that's eight, eight quarters out of her three years that she's been with us that she has been recognized for her performance. And again, that that relates to criminal traffic and community policing. And speaking of community policing, you may recall that in her first two years here with us, she was the community policing officer of the year. And that was amongst all her peers. She was chosen for the number of community policing, not only the number of community policing incidents, but the the quality of her community policing work. So she's done an outstanding job. Since that time, she's taken on many added responsibilities, because of course, a promotion is not just a reward for for performance, but it's also an acknowledgement acknowledgement by the police department that she is ready and able to take on more responsibilities. And she's proven that already. So some of the things she's done, she is our social media account manager. A lot of these duties she assumed in Corporal Barrett's absence, so she's taken on even more. Preparing the speed trail reports, submitting preliminary breath test reports to the state police, gathering data for a possible radio replacement, which I'm going to hit you guys with in the near future. Gathering comparison of pay and benefits of of other police departments, which Joe and I will talk about shortly. Mentoring new officers, a lot of additional training. She's a field training officer. In summary, a dependable, consistent, well-organized police officer with a great attitude. And without a doubt, it made the decision very easy for for me and us to decide that she was very capable of being a corporal, being the first-line supervisor on her group. So we're here to officially recognize her today and give her her new badge and chevrons. And so without further ado, please come forward, Morgan. We'll have to get rid of the pink plastic badge you're wearing on your uniform. But it is my honor to present her with her new badge. The lieutenant's already said he needs to work on this a little bit to get it a little a little shinier. But if you wouldn't mind, if you would move.
The most stressful part, right there.
And your plastic badge for your other uniform and your chevrons. Interesting story about the chevrons. I don't know if you know the history of the chevron?
Please, share.
It actually is a French word. It means rafters, if you think about it, and how they how they're shaped like a rafter. But they go back to the twelfth century. And today it's used to show tenure, authority and and respect for the position. So she certainly is very deserving of that. Another little tidbit is in U K, Canada and Australia, the chevrons are worn upside down. In in the U S and NATO nations, they're worn the other way.
Interesting.
A little factoid.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And a certificate, of course, acknowledging her promotion. And maybe we can get some pictures. But again, Morgan, thank you for all that you've done. You've been a pleasure and Morgan, Jason, Sergeant Slare, Corporal Barrett are the future leaders of this department. And would do the town well to take care of them and keep them happy and keep them here. Because when Sean and I are gone, these will be the people leading, leading in this department.
Scout's honor.
I'm not in, I'm not in. You're wearing your Gs.
Sounds like you're
Hey, that's a better.
Get it in your pocket.
All right, one, two, three. Yeah, whatever your voice. Chief? All right, over here again. All right.
Good deal. He's going for a landscape, I can't think. Thank you, Joe. Especially the way you need to get the feet in the photo. Congratulations, Morgan. Thank you. I am so proud. I appreciate it. Thanks so much. Thank you. No, your fault is up to yourself. By the way, Morgan, when when you were leaving the academy, a little bird told me that this is the trajectory that I should, that we all should expect from you. So you're 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 proving that 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 recommendation proper. So thank you. Keep it up for sure, for sure. Now see, you can get a shot of that.
She actually used to ride with Jason when she was just an intern.
That's what I remember.
Jason showed her the ropes and got her to agree to put her application in. So Jason deserves a lot of credit.
Yeah, it's nice for Jason to be here to see that. So that's fantastic. Thank you, guys.
I'm a big brother moment.
Keep up the good work. For sure. Welcome. Absolutely. You're welcome anytime. All right.
Thank you all for that. And moving moving along, I'll ask Lieutenant Queen to come forward. He's got his auxiliary unit update, which almost didn't make it to the screen tonight.
Yeah, I apologize. I don't know if you guys, you guys got it ahead of time, but it's a new format. Because it's been a year since we last spoke. I was getting ready to get shipped off to the sandbox. So but this year, so as you can see, we have yeah, put in a lot of hours this year, and we still have three or four more events, plus a bunch of patrols and a lot of other things between now and the end of the year. So we're going to hit well over a thousand hours plus for the unit. Currently, eight A P Os and one crossing guard. We're always looking for that second crossing guard and four additional A P Os to support. See, I bumped it to twelve, not ten. So four more. Trying to get there. But as you can see, yeah, ship her to Stars and hope for the best. As you can see, our predominant amount of work is special events. So that is everything from D S C sponsored, town-sponsored events to departmental events that we've put on, as well as supporting other community partners outside of the town, so like the National Guard up the street, as well as Springfield Hospital. So we've taken out two additional events this year supporting them. So, which has been great.
They're kind of trick-or-treats with the National Guard.
So they set up in their parking lot. So that's the Army National Guard. So it's the police, they have a police battalion as well as a a, it's, I'm going to get it wrong, it's a resource-based. So so they do a lot of the logistics and things like that for the Maryland, Maryland National Guard. And so we had it in the parking lot right up front, and just a bunch, we had our pop up, pop up in a bunch of tents, and we had our vehicles, state showed up. The fire department showed up.
During the Main Street?
This was on Saturday, it was past Saturday.
It was, okay, it was this, it was in conjunction with?
Nope.
It was separate?
Separate.
Oh, Saturday, because was it Sunday?
Yeah, yesterday.
Yesterday was our trick-or-treat on Main, yep.
And a lot of bazooka bubble gum.
So this was their first year doing it as well, the National Guard doing it. And so they're hoping for more turnout as they start to do this. But they really appreciated us as being neighbors, as well as state and freedom showing up as well. It was good. Just a great partnership, and we needed, they want to interact more with us and be more part of the local community. So a lot of opportunity to support both ways, especially like Veterans Day and things like that down the road.
Okay.
They said we'll bring any kind of big truck for your for your Fourth of July parade, whatever you want.
Love that.
So
Cool, cool.
Moving on to the right side of it, so training. So actually, the admin duties is kind of the next high thing. That's a lot. That's what we do to manage the whole whole kit and caboodle from just records management, just day-to-day management, supporting these meetings, supporting chief and whatever in his leadership, whatever they need, to training, development, all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot there on the admin side. But really, I want to focus on the training, because we've done a lot of training this year. So it's been virtual, but some of it's actually been hands-on. So that whole CPR, A E D training is always key. But we held an O C spray training course about a month and a half ago and certified four of our officers in O C spray. So that just, it's another defensive tool that they can help protect themselves, as well as our officers as well, just in case. I could tell you the seven and a half years that I've been here, I've never had to pull my O C spray, which is good. So but it's just an added extra protection. So in support. Additionally, a lot of community policing online training that we've been taking. And so some lead training as well, which has been great. So the police one software package that the department uses, we also have a license to be able to use and do a lot of training there.
Can any of that training be used if a person goes from being an auxiliary police officer to a police officer? Does any of it translate or not?
So it's it it's like, physically, yes, but on paper, no, because it's a joint account. So unfortunately, they are accredited courses from for, was it continuing education? What is it? There's a term that you all use. In-service. In-service training. There you go. But unfortunately, they'll get the knowledge, but they won't be able to actually have it on paper.
I think what you're asking is, is it the same training for auxiliary as it would be for sworn?
Yeah. Well, that too as well. It is the same, it's the same training.
But it's not necessarily, like, you'd have to redo it once you become sworn police officer?
Yeah, it's not like a continuing credit that they can carry over, because it's a joint account. So I have eight officers using the same login for it. So yeah, so but it's great. It's great knowledge. It puts it puts confidence in in the auxiliary officer, but also provides confidence that when we're working alongside other sworn officers, that we know what we're doing. We've been trained. That's the big thing. We've been trained. We practice. We use use in real life as needed. And that's the continuing mantra and model that we keep doing. Keeps us out of trouble.
Seems to be working.
Trying.
Yeah.
Keeps us out of trouble. But I have a good group of folks that that volunteer, so I mean, Steve. But yes, across the board, great team. I need more. I need more people like Steve and the rest of my team to be here.
Hard to find.
It's tough, but I'm going to get back at it. We're dipping down into the the cooler months. A lot of people come out of the woodwork for some reason. So outside of that, what other questions?
How is the D S C town event walkthroughs that are under meetings different than the special events?
So we, the walkthroughs are actually for the special events. So it's actually a physical meeting. So we sit down with Julie and Bree and walk through each of the permits and kind of walk through what they plan for those events. It's very important because it helps us kind of work out all the kinks. Even though we've done these before, we've done these events numerous times, there's always sometimes atmospherics and gotchas that maybe pop up. We don't know all the atmospherics until the week before or the week of, in case something's going on in the world or in the area that that we need to plan for. So it's always good to have that walkthrough. So we're all on the same page from a volunteer perspective, from a department perspective and from kind of a meeting coordinator, event coordinator perspective. Yeah, too easy. And then R M S, so we do use R M S as well. So we log most of our work in R M S as well. So that's the records management system that Chief mentioned earlier. And we use the same codes that you see in that spreadsheet, but it's a very whittled down. We don't have the, I think it's close to fifty-some odd that the sworn have. We have it down to like fifteen. It just makes it easier for my guys. It's one less thing to get confused if, oh, is it this or this?
Right.
So and it helps narrow, because that's our scope, right?
Right.
We don't do warrants. So why, why should we have that as a warrant check? All right. So three or four, three, three more events left, and then event season's over with. But then we're going to be upticking the patrols because of the cooler season and the holiday season. So that's the plan.
That's awesome. Your your team is greatly appreciated, and and the the gratitude is too often, too infrequently expressed. And I I lived here in Sykesville for ten years, twelve years, not knowing why some of the police officers were wearing gray and some of them were wearing blue and not realizing how fortunate we are to have the robust, the 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 model, really, right? The model for the state, it's been proven that that Sykesville's auxiliary unit and its administration is is the model. So it's hugely attributed to you. Thank you very much.
And I will take this into retirement at some point.
Okay.
Ten years.
Got it.
I already got a number, ten years.
All right.
I've already looked at places that have auxiliary that I'm going to
I love it.
I'm going to change your, change your I'm going to change your, change your, change that way that things work.
I love that.
And if they don't, I know how to create one. So, cool. Well, thank you. I appreciate everybody's support as well. I mean, you know, having the town support across the board means a lot for us and be able to operate and do what we do. So, you know, it keeps us motivated. And, I mean, you know, we love what we do. So, appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
And I'll see you next quarter.
So I'm sorry, is there anything that you need from us?
So right now, we're, we're doing well. You know, we were able to, and I'm going to use a decommission a vehicle and actually move, you know, kind of move that on, right? We have a second vehicle with us that we're using, which is great, because along with getting OC spray training, most of my officers have made all the qualifications to do solo patrolling, which is important. So now we can have two vehicles on at any point, which, you know, makes it look like we're always there all the time. So it's great. So more eyes, more agility and flexibility. We have just updated our uniforms. So we're in the process of, these are now going to be like our Class As, and we're now moving to a more breathable, wicking, comfortable.
Polo style.
Polo style that, it's the same company that.
The police are moving toward that as well.
The police have moved to, so sworn has moved to, it's just a different color.
Much more comfortable under and outer carrier.
Okay, that makes sense?
Yep. And so, which has been great, because now you have one uniform, almost, you know. You're only purchasing two different color shirts, so it makes it easier. But we're in the process of getting the patches for the long sleeves. So the short sleeves are in service, which is great.
Right? Everyone, everyone's like, yes, finally. So yeah, so I think we're doing well. We are, I know we're probably blowing through our budget this year already, but, but, you know, I mean, I'll be transparent, right? You know, it's a rebuilding year, and you know, change a little bit, right, is good. You know, because, you know, I know you all believe in us, so it's good to have that change. And we do it in baby steps, a little bit at a time.
Incremental, as Councilman Schofield said two weeks ago. Yeah, yeah.
And Jeff and his crew will be out Halloween night to be extra patrols.
That's wonderful.
So, you know, we obviously, we couldn't do it without them.
No.
You see the list of events, and that's just, that's not a complete list, but it's an awful lot of events. And without them, we would be calling the state police and the sheriff's department and asking them every time to send us more officers, because, you know, especially when we were down an officer or two, it puts a tremendous strain on us. And then you've got to remember, there's officers that are still scheduled to work on the day of an event, that have to work that day, and then that night after an event. So you can't take away from the patrol function just to focus all your resources on an event. So Jeff and his crew were just highly, highly valuable to us.
And I'm happy, and I'm happy to, like, if you want to get into depth at any point as a sidebar or whatever, on what are, we really do, and underneath, underneath the hood, happy to have those conversations at any point. So.
Maybe you'll come up with a few talking points that you can share with us at your next report?
Sounds good.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Alright, Lieutenant, thank you. And that brings us to council and commission liaison updates. I'll begin at my far left with Mr. Mark Dyer.
Well, piggybacking on what we've, I saw, I got something in the mail that I wanted to talk about. I got an advertisement for a mere $128. They will give me my deed, a copy of my deed, and my appraisal, and all the documents that exist for free in our copy, and are easily obtainable. And I got another ad for 50 cents less. It was only $127.50.
Oh wow, there's competition.
With these documents that are clearly available.
I told you they'd be coming.
I went online. I took a leisurely approach to see how long it would take me. Took me 22 minutes to get everything. All the way from my first deed, when I couldn't say Sykesville, right, all the way to the update that you were kind enough as to help us put our daughters on our deed, for free. Now, if you earn, I worked it out, you earn $436 an hour, you know, that's what you earn, it's probably worth your while to pay someone. But for regular people, this is crazy. And if you're a senior, I think they're targeting seniors, is how I got it.
I would guess.
And, you know, talk about stepping in the wrong ring. I'm very angry about this. So if you're a senior citizen, and you don't even own a computer, I checked with Joe and I checked with the mayor, call here, we'll get an appointment. I will show you how to do this. I will give you an account. I will get you all this information for the grand total price of free.
Mark, it's not just seniors. It's anytime a deed is recorded. There's, I don't know how they do it, I don't know what the setup is, but anytime a deed is recorded, this goes out. Every single time.
Because it becomes a public document.
Yep. And so, I mean, I've had people, I had this one little old lady in Howard County. She called me up in tears, saying that these people were actually calling her, and saying that I was lying to them, that I, that she had to pay them that money.
Wow.
Anyway, I'm offering, I have one option that you all good, hardworking people don't. They work hard every day. I'm retired. If you want to meet in the middle of the afternoon, they have work doing important things. I'm at home, I'm the computer myself. I would be glad to come over here and get that information for you. I know there are some, I take classes at Carroll Community, and it's amazing. I've had people my age who would tell me that they don't know how to run a computer, they've never touched one, they're afraid of them. I said, well, let's talk. So if you're sitting at home, getting harassed by these people that my colleague is talking about, give us a call. I will meet you here, we'll get that information. It is something you should be doing periodically, because we've been seeing those commercials for Home and Steel, I think it's called. You know, pay us a bunch of money and we'll go online and make sure that you haven't, they haven't changed. Well, periodically, I do it myself whenever I just feel like it. I can show you how to do that. It's just crazy that we're charging people for something that, as you pointed out, is a matter of public record and is by law available.
Yes.
It just makes me mad. And whoa, and an update. I was pointed out that some banks will call you if you signify that you're willing to do that. So go in and check your profile. If you said, yeah, I will accept phone calls, you may get a call from your bank. It's rare, but it can happen. So, but be sure who's on the other end, because, you know, my name is Bill and I wish to talk to you about Records IRS. This is what we did in the old days.
Yeah, you could actually.
This is what we do now.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark, for your, for your astute, astuteness. Is that the word? Astuteness. And for.
Determination, I imagine.
Yes, yes.
I was thinking passion.
Passion is good, too. But also for your generosity of time. Yeah, yeah. Okay. How about you, Councilman?
You know, it's hard to follow. That was pretty good. And I actually don't have anything for the group this week. Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you. Actually, I'll go. I'm going to go in order of the table. It's just a reminder that we have a pumpkin drop-off, our annual pumpkin drop-off, to feed the rescued animals at the Hatton Rescue, Animal Rescue or Rescue Farm, just in Howard County there. They come and they wait in the Little Sykes Rail Park for anyone with any pumpkins that they've carved or not carved, as long as they have not been painted or have any kind of chemical application to them. The animals will love you for it. And if you want to bring the little ones by, or the older ones by, that are young in spirit and love animals, farm animals, come by with or without the pumpkins, because a couple sheep this year, for the first time, are coming. And our favorite mini donkeys will be there. Paco Bell, yep. Snowflake, you can imagine, is all white. And this is all from memory. And I can't remember the third one, but I'll think of it before we tune off here tonight. Anyway, it's from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM on November 9th, and that is a Sunday. And it is the day after the beer festival, the craft beer festival, at Little Sykes Rail Park. Thank you.
So, HDC met and reviewed windows and signs.
Just the general, oh, applications for windows and signs.
Yeah.
I thought maybe you reviewed actual windows.
Yeah, no.
And signs. Okay, got it.
But there's, I will say, sitting on HDC, the level of knowledge and expertise that we have in our commission is pretty impressive. Anyway, so the, yeah, they're a great group. But I also wanted to also indulge in a moment of concern for our community.
Yes, please.
So, was at a meeting earlier today with the county, and starting November 1st, due to the government shutdown, any households receiving SNAP benefits will not be receiving them. So that is a huge hit to our families. And our food banks have already received a decrease in funding anyway, and an increase in need due to the federal workers in our communities. So, for SNAP members, in just our zip code, so this is not our municipality, but just 21784, we are talking about 582 households and 1,048 people who will be affected, which means no money for food. So, very concerned about that. I did speak with Joe, and I think we need to make sure that we're supporting our local food banks. But I think unfortunately, very quickly into November, we are going to hit a crisis point where our food banks will not be able to support our neighbors. And so, wanted to make kind of everybody aware of what's happening and what's, what's coming down the pipe pretty quickly, as a huge, I think, community need. And I think we will be called on as a municipality to start taking care of our residents. It is not something that the state or the county can really step in and help fix, unfortunately, due to a variety of things more complex and worth getting into right now. But, because at the end of the day, it doesn't matter. At the end of the day, we're going to have neighbors who will not have food. So people who have SNAP can access it through November, through, what, October 31st, I believe. So we definitely encourage people to make sure you have shelf-stable food. But I don't know, you know, Chief, if we're going to see an increase in calls due to just the severity of the need. There are mixed reports, whether this will also affect people who receive temporary cash assistance.
I was going to ask you if you heard anything about that.
There are very inconsistent messages coming out between the state and the federal government. But the SNAP that's being turned off is connected to the same mechanism, I believe, that the temporary cash assistance comes out as well. So we could very quickly run into people not being able to afford basic needs or housing, even with, you know, potential housing vouchers, the money that they use to cover, might not be there. So, and I know we have two apartment complexes renting areas just in our town limits that I'm pretty concerned about. So, wanted to kind of bring that forward, and also kind of let the council know, I think, at some point, as a municipality, we might have to step in to support those that we can.
I appreciate the information.
Is there a way that you can provide us with local food bank locations?
So, yeah, the food banks are set up, and Joe's working on a list. So, the state kind of support ones through the Maryland Food Bank are set up through Westminster Rescue for us, because the, and then distributed on a regular basis to like our local churches. But because our churches don't have storage capacity for anything, so it all goes to the main one up in Westminster, and then sent down. But I think we need to, and I don't know if you want to speak to kind of what we can do or starting to do.
The obvious one is St. Paul's has a pop-up food pantry every second and fourth Saturday of every month. I know we've at least reached out to them to start to get some preliminary information about what they need. We could even potentially set up a temporary drop-off site here at the townhouse, just because, you know, we're open a lot more than the churches typically are. And then beyond that, we can start pushing out additional information on area food pantries that are, that are out there and available for everybody. And just encourage residents that do have the means to, you know, please donate, both food or cash, helps no matter what.
Well, I think the thing we do great, the best, right, is checking in on our neighbors and making sure that those that we have immediate contact with are okay.
Yeah, I mean, I remember how the community came together, the community at large came together during COVID, particularly in the early stages, when a lot of people were not getting to work.
And my concern is, is that we're going to hit that level. I mean, we've got federal workers in our communities as well, in addition to this. So.
Yeah, I think something that has just been very recently brought to my attention, and that I think a lot of people don't think of, is that not all government workers are, you know, wealthy. Like, not all government workers are in a high-paid position. They're not all scientists, and they're not all, you know, CEOs of some sort at that level. And a lot are clerical, everyday duties, and are having no paychecks coming for the last three weeks and coming up on four. And it is our responsibility as fellow humans to check on our neighbors and see how we can help. And so, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And to know that, you know, federal workers are amongst us, but also those that are dependent upon these, the support from the government, and who live because of it. So, they live here in Sykesville. Okay.
And it's, and it's that, the other language in the space is called ALIS.
ALIS?
ALIS. It's, it is a term defined by the United Way of identifying populations that are really one paycheck away from poverty or loss of, so it's limited resources. And in Carroll County, we do have a very high population of ALIS. So that although we have a very high working population, to your point, because we have a lot of federal employees, and so, you know, one check goes away, it has significant, and we know that they're already going to, that federal workers are already accessing our food banks. And so when you start to then add SNAP recipients in and.
When you're a single-income family and that paycheck goes away, that's how this happens. Yeah.
It's huge. Well, and even two.
Sure.
Two-income, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Okay. Thank you. Alex.
So not too much for Spark. The next Spark meeting is Thursday, November 20th, at 7:00 PM at the townhouse. It got pushed forward a week, so it's not on Thanksgiving. Then mark your calendars now for Santa's arrival on Main Street on December 6.
I'm sorry, when?
December 6. What time is the Santa?
3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00 is the.
With a tree light to follow shortly after.
Yes. Usually within a few seconds.
So at 3:00?
Is there a time limit on the date?
Not yet.
3:00 to 6:00 is the time.
But he comes down at 3:00.
Yes.
And if you're not there at 3:00, you'll miss the.
The arrival.
You miss the fire truck.
Yeah.
That's the best part.
Yeah. Well, I think lighting the tree is the best part.
I wonder why.
Or fancy new railroad part.
But the movies.
The movie is the best part.
It's the cocoa.
The cocoa's the best part.
Is there a.
Or the trains.
The trains. Oh.
It's really just a great event.
It's the whole thing.
It's the whole kit and caboodle.
It is.
Alright. You're up there, Councilman Keen. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Is there a coat drive or anything this year?
Coat drive.
We haven't, yeah, Spark hasn't discussed that. So, that's a good question.
Okay.
I think it's on our next agenda to really get into the details of it.
Okay.
I think it might be a food drive this year.
You know, that might make most sense. Yeah.
That would make most sense.
To supply the food pantry. Okey-dokey. Councilman Keenan?
Just tying into something Councilwoman Gurov was talking about, we do have our annual Sykesville Happy-Thon. And I expect that we will have an increased number of families who are looking for help with what the Happy-Thon provides, which is some toys for their kids, blankets, clothing, food. So we are in the process of looking for donations to that. And again, I expect we will have an increased number of families this year for that. So, just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. That's a good reminder.
Fall Festival, Fall Record Attendance, that went very well with the live entertainment and the Drumline performance. It's free for all attendees. We've got cotton candy and a variety of fall-themed craft activities. It looked like a really great day. The Diwali Celebration was held under the lights of Oklahoma Avenue. About 100 guests were very happy with the celebration, and it brought some cultural joy to downtown. Very nice celebration. Trick-or-treat went well yesterday, 4 to 6, and.
I enjoyed it.
Yep. And I finally got around to seeing the pictures with the Headless Horsemen and all the other things. And they're on the Carroll County Times website. And they're on um the Carroll County Times website uh with pictures from, and you guys were there.
Oh, really? It's my dance on there, though. That's what I want to know. Can't capture it, capture that and.
I hope not.
Still photos. I hope not too, actually.
And following a brief survey, it seemed like Sunday um was really, it was appreciated that it was Sunday and it seems like that'll be the day going forward now. So that went well.
I'm 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 sure that our police support loved it as well, you know, Sunday. But it did, it did go off very well yesterday, yeah.
You can argue with him.
Yep, nice weather too. Uh Craft Beer Beer Festival's coming up. Um we still have new volunteers. Uh registrations available for volunteers on the website and our Facebook page. And then finally, as some of you know, there is um our Main Street. Our DSC is in the eight semifinalists for the National Main Street Award that will be issued in April, so fingers crossed.
Yes.
Hoping for a win this year.
Yes, so this is uh the second time that the uh Downtown Sykesville Connection has applied for the Great American Main Street Award. Uh so if you hear anybody say GAMSA, that's what that stands for. And uh we're two for two to get to the semifinals, which is uh not ve- very frequent that you make it to the semifinals on your first application. But here we are again at at the second opportunity and got our fingers and toes crossed.
And if you if you don't quite understand it, Julie describes it as the Super Bowl for Main Streets, so.
That's that's the way I say it, right? That's cool.
Academy Awards for Main Streets.
Yeah, Emmy, Grammy Awards, Grammy, Oscars, all that, yeah, yeah. All right, cool, um.
I will say, just a note, um being able to close off a portion of Oklahoma has made a lot of these events even better. Um as I've been going by and seeing like just the safety aspect of it, um the community feel of it, it's just really good, so.
Nice little setting, yep.
Yeah.
It is, it's lovely. It's very quaint, even when there's no people in it, just with the lights and uh and all the historic storefronts leading the way.
When do, when can we re-approach the conversation about just?
Strategic planning. February, in an ice storm.
It's the best time.
Only when there's an ice storm.
So we will be having a closed session this evening. Uh is there anything for the good, oh, you haven't done your updates.
One really reminder, just to say, trick or treating this Friday, six to eight PM, porch lights on, just another reminder.
Yes.
Even if it rains, it's still Friday.
Right. It's always on Halloween.
Halloween.
Always. It doesn't need to be in the newsletter. It's always on Halloween. It's that simple. Okay.
Got it.
No, six to, I'm sorry.
Great. President Carter.
Can we say it again?
Yes, the joke tells itself.
I gotta say it again. Trick or treating, six to eight on Friday, porch lights on.
Thank you. Porch lights on if you want to participate.
Six to eight.
Yeah, six to eight, six, seven.
I still have San Paul.
Don't do that.
All right, it is not six to seven, it's six to eight. Uh we will have a closed session this evening. Um one last call, anything good for the, anything left for the good of the order? Okay, I'm gonna read this. The meeting that we will be having in a closed uh format is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, section three dash three oh five. This evening, be one, two, discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, uh employees or officials over whom it has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. This evening, we'll be discussing personnel, discussion of vacancy procedures, confidential confidential personal information. And so with my next gavel strike, I will call for a five-minute recess and give the opportunity for the peanut gallery to clear and uh anyone else that's um not gonna stay for the meeting. All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We're in recess for five minutes.